Nice little voice, her voice. I hereby call the Planning Commission meeting to order. Start with the roll call.
John Barlow.
Here.
Ben Hunsaker.
Here.
Darlene Rose.
Here.
Josiah Jessen.
Yeah.
Sarah J. Coulter Mitchell.
Here.
Kyle Cupp.
Here.
And City Council member Spencer Irwin. And our Chair Timothy Malat.
Here.
Also on staff, we've got our City Attorney Ashley Vogel and City Manager, Planning Official Chris Workman.
Okay, looks like we're going straight into new business this evening.
Correct.
So, new business is, is PC 25-03 Island Annexations. And I'm going to, I will now open the joint here, the hearing on the case files for PC 25-03, an application for annexation of 10 island properties. The case file and title summary, address is 10 individual properties identified as map and tax lots. Take a breath. North Seventh Street Public Rightofway. The city is applicant requesting to annex these properties into the city limits because they are completely surrounded by city properties. The total additional land would be 15.454 acres of low and medium density residential, industrial, and public rightofway lands. Owner, the various owners as provided in the staff report. Okay, I'm going to go over the proceedings for this evening. First, we will hear from the staff report, then there'll be any additional correspondence. The applicant, then we'll make a presentation, then we'll have public testimony in favor of the application, public testimony in opposition of the application, neutral testimony. As far as the testimony is concerned, if you want to speak and you haven't already, please get, fill out form that's in the back of the room and give to our city manager here. Then there's going to rebuttals by the applicant, questions for staff from commission, and then closing of the public testimony. After the record is closed for testimony, no other comments will be heard unless, unless this body reopens the public testimony. This body being the commission. The commission deliberates and votes on a final decision. Due to the number of people wanting to provide public testimony this evening, I will ask that we will keep the comments to.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Four people.
I will let you know when your time is up. We will first hear from those in person, followed by anyone participating remotely. For those in attendance, please fill out the testimony form and submit it to City Manager. Ask, do we, do we, do we have anybody to sign up to testimony remotely at this point? Okay, if no, yes.
Skip all that and go right to.
Any question should be addressed through me as the chair. Please state both your name and city of residence for the record, as the hearing will be recorded. Please keep testimony concise and to the point. Now, the Planning Commission will make a decision tonight, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. If the matter is continued to a time and date certain in the future, this will be the only notice of the date you will receive. The criteria for this evening, the criteria that apply to the decisions are listed in the staff report. These are the criteria the Planning Commission must use in reaching a decision. Testimony and any evidence provided should be directed at those, at these criteria and other criteria believed to apply to the decision. Please describe how your comments relate to the criteria. Despite the importance of the other issues or concerns, the Planning Commission must face its decision on whether the evidence shows the application complies with the criteria or not. The Planning Commission's decision will be forwarded to the City Council for consideration. The City Council will hold a public hearing on this matter on August 11th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Failure to raise an issue in significant detail to allow the Planning Commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other concerns relating to proposed conditions of approval is sufficient detail to allow the Planning Comi-, excuse me, I mean, reiterate that whole sentence, because I changed, I changed its meaning. Failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other concerns related to proposed conditions of approval in sufficient detail to allow the Planning Commission to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. All right, now I ask the Planning Commission, members of the Planning Commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, conflicts of interest, including any site visits. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact bias or conflict of interest and indicate it whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Is there any, from any of the commissioners? All right, it looks like it's time for the staff report. We'll now hear from the staff report.
Thank you Chair, appreciate it. And I'll, first want to excuse our city planner, Michael wasn't able to be here this evening. So I'm doing this, but also I did write the staff report and I'm pretty familiar with this topic. So, have their questions and go through it. I'll go on the basis and the presumption that the Planning Commission's had a chance to go through the staff report, but I also recognize there's some audience members here as well, so I'll give just a brief summary and then there'll be some time at the end to answer specific questions about the report. So, as short, as introduced, cities proposing annex these 10 island properties. They're referred to island properties because they're completely surrounded by other properties that are all inside city limits. So it's a county property, not necessarily owned by the county, it's owned by private individuals, but we call them county properties because it's not incorporated into the city limits of the city of Flemish. The properties with commercial or industrial zoning or uses would be brought to the city immediately following the majority vote of the electorate. So, we kind of talk the process, it goes to the Planning Commission, goes to the City Council, and then it does get referred to the voters. And then following that vote, the City Council does a final ordinance to actually adopt them in. Properties that are zoned or used for commercial industrial get annexed immediately after that ordinance, or 30 days after it's approved. But residential zoned properties or used properties are delayed by state law, it's a three-year delay. That gives the property owner some time to make any arrangements they need to do, to prepare for the adjustments, prepare for the increased taxes, et cetera. So there's a three-year period from the date, the vote takes place to when they're actually annexed. So that gives a little bit more time for residential zoned or used properties. Skipping down a little bit to last paragraph and I'll open a section, the criteria found in the Floham Development Code is used to determine whether the application is complete, and if the answers and materials provided by the applicant satisfy the applicable criteria. I do want to make one note, there's referencing the staff report a couple of times to the election of November 2025. That is in question right now, November 2025 is a special election, and we just heard, the city just heard last week that if we were to move forward with this topic and we've got one other, the city has one other item for that ballot or for that election, the city of Flemish would be the only one submitting items for that election, which would mean we would bear the entire cost of that election, which is about a $50,000 ticket. So, we've got a meeting with the City Council tomorrow night to discuss whether or not the council would prefer to delay sending those ballots to the county for, and sell it to the electorate until the May 2026 general election, in which case we know there's going to be other county ballot measures there, and so the city wouldn't incur any cost for that election. We just get a piggyback on the counties. So, more than likely that will be the case, but I won't know for sure until I talk to the council tomorrow night. So, any references in the staff report to the November election going to electorate, just put an asterisk by that, it may be November, it might be May 2026. So, I wanted to make a note of that. Did receive two comments prior to the staff report being issued. Robert Ryan Workman submitted a letter that's been submitted in the packet, also received a letter from Anita, Nina Azarenko? Sorry, I'm slurring that, sorry Anita. And that was included in the packet as well. I see both of them are here tonight and they've both signed up to provide testimony, so we'll hear marking them this evening. But good luck, make just note of those two letters that we received prior to staff report being written. Let me run through the findings of facts with you, this is top of page two packet. Some of the properties have a combined total size approximately 15.454 acres, with a mix of zoning, including low-density residential, medium-density residential, industrial, and public rightofway. All 10 of the properties fit the definition of island property, each being completely surrounded by properties incorporated within the city of Flemish city limits. No development is planned for any of these proposed properties at this time. I know sometimes the Planning Commission will get applications for like annexation and development, kind of mingled or combined. In this case, there's been no application for any type of development, it's just for annexation at this time. The annexation is consistent with purposes of the Flemish Development Code, policies of the comprehensive plan, all requirements of all city ordinances, and other applicable policies and standards adopted by the city. The city is able to provide water, wastewater, storm drain, park, and street services upon annexation of the properties. So, none of these are far outliers where there's no utility services or anything, they all, if they were to develop or if they were to be annexed and want to connect to city services, they'd be able to do so upon their request. And number six, upon approval by the Planning Commission and City Council, island annexations must also be approved by the voters. Some annexations, if they're 100% in favor of the annexation, like the landowner applies to annexing the city. There's new state law, newish state law says the City Council cannot send those out for vote of the people. Island annexations don't fit that criteria, so they will go out for vote of the people. So, don't want to have any confusion there, some annexations do go for vote, some don't go out for vote. Island annexations are types that will go out for vote of the people, as I've previously mentioned. So just going through the criteria, again, I'll be fairly brief on these. There's a map that's provided later in the staff report, shows the location of the agency, they're kind of spread throughout the city. A few up in the northwest corner, some of the northeast, and then a few down the southeast part of the city. So they are kind of spread, they are kind of lumped together and maybe five or six or seven kind of different lumpings. But essentially, when they go on the ballot, they'll each be individually identified as an individual property, an individual tax lot that'll be on the ballot for individual approval or not. The, as far as annexation filing deadlines, we've talked through that again, depending on which way the council goes, we'll have our compliance with section B. This again notes November 2025, asterisk there, that may be the May 26 election. As far as C, requirements for applications, the owners may or may not consent to these. We didn't do any type of a straw poll, one way or another, this has been a priority of the City Council to annex these in, and so that's why we're moving forward on it. And we are holding these public hearings so that we can hear from property owners to hear whether they would be in favor or opposed to it. Either way, the city has the right to initiate this annexation process. Lead description of each of the properties is provided in the staff report as well. There's the map that I referenced earlier on page, bottom page three. Moving over to page four, four is kind of catchall, sufficient information for city staff to allow for completion of an impact analysis. Like we've seen water supply facilities, sewer, drainage, transportation park, et cetera. I'll just read, the city's ability to provide municipal services to the highest, greatest impact conceptual development was done assuming current standards for development. Subject properties are each relatively small and spread throughout the city. New development of all properties up to the highest density would result in the following development. So we did a kind of an overall look of what we'd be looking at for low-density residential, there's about 6.25 acres worth. If they were all, despite what their current development is, if you just took those low-density residential and maximize the development, you could have 30, you could have up to 35 new dwellings of single-family residential. Similarly, with medium-density residential, 3.52 acres worth, you could get 27 dwellings. And then for the light industrial, we're at 5.58 acres. Industrial's a little trickier, because some industrial users use a whole lot of water and a lot of sewer, some industrial users use very little. That might be a warehouse with a restroom, right? So, industrial's a little bit tougher to gauge on whether the city would have sufficient capacity or not. But based on our overall capacity to provide water and treat sewer, our street infrastructure, our park infrastructure, and stormwater infrastructure, I'll quote here, the public works reported that for these small amounts of development spread throughout the city, the impact on water, excuse me, the impact on sewer, water, storm drain, park, and transportation systems would be minimal and well within the city's ability to provide for this level of development. Upon development, each property would have to submit a site plan and get approval for utilities based on the actual development proposed. And the city would verify its ability to provide city services to the proposed development at that time. So as far as city services goes, meets the criteria, and the city would be able to provide those services. The Flemish School District will provide school facilities, they were given notice, we didn't get any comments back from the school district. So the assumption is with the additional housing, upon development, over whatever period of time that might be, the additional, you know, one student for two units of development, 31 students, is something that the school district would be able to handle. It's the only assumption we can make, having not heard anything back from the school district. But again, no development plan for this time, so that's as these properties were to develop over the next however many years, the assumption would be there would be some more students added to the school district. Also looking at any new facilities that would be required, if this, these properties are annexed, staff doesn't foresee the need for any off-site improvements. We look at the method for source for financing, again, no financing required, we don't see any public facilities needed at this time. We didn't provide any type of conceptual site plan for these, their island annexation's a little different than, you know, a large, say, 80-Q piece of property that wants to annex in the city, we want to have an idea conceptually what that could look like. For these individual properties, we didn't take the steps to do that, so just thought it was necessary or appropriate to presume anything on these island properties. Map amendment rezone will be considered with the rezone proceeding after the annexation discussion. The intent is the current comprehensive plan zoning designation will carry forth on all of these properties. If it's zoned for industrial on the comp plan, it'll come in as industrial. If it's zoned for medium density, it'll come in as R2, which is our medium-density residential. So, don't have any reason on any of these properties to change the zoning just because it's annexed into the city. And then with that, just to add to this a little bit, any of the current uses of the property would be allowed to continue as well. Those get grandfathered in, is the term that we use, so if there's a house up now, and it gets annexed to the city, the house still remains there, you can still live in the house, none of that changes, right? So there is no real change to the allowed use of the property. Just because it's being annexed, the only thing that's going to change is any type of future development would have to comply with city development code as opposed to like county development code. And even then, county development code's going to look to the city and say, well, so within their growth boundary, we're going to defer to whatever the city would allow if you were annexed. So, again, no real changes there for a property owner, be it industrial or residential land. I'm just trying to point out kind of some potential negatives that may be out there for property owners that would be annexed into the city. Under D, we reviewed the full application and deemed that the application submitted by the city was complete. As far as the staff evaluation, I'll summarize with the unknown development on bottom of page five, with unknown development for proposed residential industrial sites. Staff submits that the staff finds that the city has the capability and capacity to provide required utility services in light of comments already made to other approved developments, this criteria is met. For review criteria, the annexation application's been reviewed and analyzed against the city development code. And at top of page six, applicable policies and the comprehensive plan. Following review provides staff analysis. So we look at the comp plan, which is kind of the highest level document that we have for the city. We looked at some of the current policy within the comprehensive plan, both for citizen involvement, for housing, for urbanization, and just pulled out those policies that we felt supported annexation of these properties, and also any of those that were opposed to it. Sometimes you have policies that don't necessarily oppose an action, but you might have policies that contradict one another, right? Like one'll say maximize housing, the others say preserve natural resources. Sometimes you can't do both and those priorities will conflict. We didn't see conflicting policies with the annexation of these islands. We also looked at public facilities and services as a, as a fourth policy and didn't find any, anything there. Number three is pretty straightforward, you know, if you're annexing property, you got to be adjacent to city limits, and all these properties are, again, they're islands, they're completely surrounded. And number four, property must be of the benefit of the city and the community of Flemish. I'll just read, annexation of the subject properties will benefit the city of Flemish by adding tax revenue and reducing confusion and conflicts on code compliance, policing, and other city and county services provided and enjoyed by the current properties. Annexation of the residential properties may allow for additional housing, and the annexation of the light industrial properties may encourage new development and job creation, criteria's met. Again, no proposed development now, but obviously if you're annexing to the city, the ability to, you know, partition your property, you're at a house on your property is significantly increased as opposed to being in a county where you got minimums and typically development's a lot more difficult within the county property. So, is there potential to benefit the city as far as number of housing units, number of jobs available? There is, but kind of minimize that as much as I can, there is no proposed development right now. It might not benefit the city at all as far as development goes for years to come, but what we would see is some additional tax revenue received, because these properties, once annexed, would start, you know, three years from now, if they're residential, or immediately if they're commercial industrial, they'd start paying tax revenue to the city of Flemish, rather than just to the county and the school and everyone else. So, just make a point there that, yeah, there's benefit, but I want to overemphasize the benefit there or inflate it anyway. These, none of the sites, we took a close look, none of the sites have been used for industrial or industrial or any type of like agricultural purposes. We don't anticipate the use of any pesticides, herbicides, or any type of chemicals or anything like that, or we require a phase one environmental assessment or anything. So, so that one's kind of moot, six is a little bit moot there as well. For number seven, none of them exceed the 30 acres. And for number eight, as a condition of, this one's kind of interesting. Number eight, we got hung up on this a little bit, the last annexation up on Ninth Street. There's a code provision that says within 18 months of annexation, we want to have a safe route to school connection from that property to the sidewalk system, right? We don't want to annex property and create a harmful situation where there's no safe way for kids, or adults for that matter, to access the sidewalk system. And so, within annexation, we got to go within 18 months, we got to connect in. With these island annexations, in talking to a few of the property owners, one of the major concerns they had was if they get annexed into the city today, and then tomorrow the City Council comes out and says, okay, now you got to put in a $20,000 sidewalk or a $30,000 sidewalk, which would be pretty big hardship on them. So, as a condition of approval to kind of subside that concern a little bit, staff's recommendation is to include this condition that no island property annexed in the city shall be required to install sidewalks along adjacent property lines until such time that the property owner submits an application, sorry, not and, but an application for development that would, upon approval, require sidewalks to be installed. So, if they're annexed to the city, again, we're going to presume that it's just everything the same, there's going to be no big mandates. But if that property owner decides, oh, I'm going to partition my property and add a home on next door, that's going to trigger the need for sidewalks. So the city would require a sidewalk with that development application. I did question, you know, if somebody submits like, I want to build a fence, well, fences don't require a permit, so that wouldn't require a sidewalk to go in. If they want to paint the house, do landscaping, improve their driveway, none of those things require a permit from the city, so none of those would trigger the need for a sidewalk to be installed. But, you know, again, if they were to do a partition, if they were to, you know, want to do an accessory dwelling unit, they want to build a new building on the side, of course, any of those things that require a permit to be pulled would trigger the need for that sidewalk to be installed by that time, just like we do with our current Flemish properties. I think it's an acceptable consideration, I guess, for island properties coming in. It's actually something that I'd be interested in talking to the Planning Commission about more at some point in future, or maybe even part that, put that part of our code language for consideration, or maybe it's just a caveat we could add in there to consider each time to alleviate some of the concerns of some of these property owners that are already going to see their property taxes increase, and then have the concern of having to bring their sidewalk up to city compliance within a relatively short amount of time. So, I'd ask the Planning Commission to consider that condition of approval, and only that condition of approval with this approval here. Subsection F of the city code satisfies all the elements of ORS 2221272, annexation without election notwithstanding contrary city law upon petition of all owners of land. I don't know if that's the right one, actually, now that I'm reading that one. So, Ashley's going to do some quick check-in and see, I think that carried you were from our last annexation. Well, Ashley could work around that, but let me go ahead and just conclude my staff report and we'll bring that topic back up here. Now, I'll conclude my report. Staff concludes, application for annexation meets the applicable criteria as set forth by Flemish Municipal Code. The conditional approval's listed, and when we get time at the end of the meeting, there's recommended motions in the staff report for you as well.
Good. Go ahead.
So, I think the final element would simply be stricken, the, there are other criteria in your code regarding annexation by consent of all owners of land, and also annexation by non-unanimous triple-majority concession, and that's neither of the categories here. So I think it would just be completely stricken.
So we'll just strike the sentence from the staff report that starts subsection, or section F of the city code, all the way through all owners of land, we'll strike that comment from the staff report.
Okay, does anybody on the commission right now have any brief questions or comments on the staff report that need to be directed to staff? Commissioner.
You mentioned the deferral of sidewalk construction until such time as work requiring a permit. Does that, and I've never been a handyman, I've never done a home remodel, does home, interior home remodels require pulling a permit?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, I was wondering how far in the weeds to go. But yeah, if you were to do an addition. But yeah, if you were to do an addition, add bedrooms, add whatever, that would, if it's, if you were redoing your kitchen, you're going to have to pull in a permit, plumbing permit, but no, those would not trigger because you're not really expanding the use of it, right? So I guess in short, if you're expanding the envelope of the building, expanding the size of it, then yes. If it's all internal, then no, that wouldn't trigger it. And again, that's the same criteria we use for homes inside settlements today. And there's, there's not a lot, but there's several properties inside settlements that don't have a city sidewalk in front of them. The Flemish development code does allow the city council to say, you, you, and you, you've got three years to put a sidewalk in or the city is going to do it and put a lien on your property. The city code allows the city that, that ability. The city, I think, lasted that maybe seven years ago and it was for select sidewalks that had a lot of need for that connectivity to take place. The one I think specifically is the, the right side, the south side of Kneeback Hill as you're going up the hill from closest to the highway. There was a sidewalk on the north side of the road, but not the south side of the road. And a request came in from a property owner. It's like, when you're crossing the street and everything else, it forces you to cross the street on a place that's not real safe to cross the street with that turn coming down the hill. So the request came in, it's like, hey, can we have the property owner, adjacent property to put that sidewalk in? And the city reached out properly and said, hey, go ahead and put the sidewalk in. And I think the HOA for the Kneeback Hill Association actually picked up the tab on that and went ahead and did that. But there, so there are times when the city will kind of flex its ability to require sidewalks to be installed. But for the most part, it's when that property that has the sidewalk's not complete, it's when they submit for development of some sort, that's usually when we pick up on it. And same thing with, you know, unpaved driveways, driveways are supposed to be paved. Several places in town that don't have a paved driveway, it'll be gravel or something. But when they want to expand the house or do some major remodel or partition, we require them to pave the driveway, put in the sidewalk and take those extra steps. So again, we would just treat these properties similar to what we're doing with others with the caveat that the city council would not kind of enforce their will on these property owners to put sidewalks.
Go ahead.
Are any of these properties already served with water and sewer?
I don't believe so, no.
I'm just a question about the timeline. So after, if, if, when the residential properties are annexed and the voters approve it, then we're talking three years after that and then is it three years plus 18 months? Or is it within that three-year time window or timeframe, they decide to partition and then they have 18 months from that time, even if they're not fully annexed? I'm just trying to figure out the.
Where do the 18 months come from?
The 18 months to put in a sidewalk. The properties included existing develop must have a safe pedestrian right within the 18 months of an annex.
We're instead doing a condition of approval that says they would not be required to do that. So the 18 months is going away. It's being replaced with the condition of approval that the city will not require them to put a sidewalk in until the property owner decides they want to develop. So the 18 months is going away or the property sells.
Couple of questions on page seven, number four, you mentioned, the fact report mentioned were the benefits being reducing confusion and conflicts on code compliance policing of the county services. Has that been an issue with these properties with some of that? Or, or other properties that have been?
Yeah, I don't want to put in my spot. There's been issues with code compliance in the past, nothing over the top. But there's been issues where, you know, high grass complaint would be the example I give where if there's high grass, city, city police can't go out there and say, by city code, you have to comply with our, our high grass, our nuisance complaint code because it doesn't apply to them, they're in the county. So then we go to the county and the county is like, yeah, we're not going to spend our time doing that. Go to the fire district, so I'm going to the fire district, the fire's, oh, you know, okay, we'll send a letter, we'll go talk to them. So there's been a few occasions, I wouldn't say it's been a huge demand on staff. It's more the confusion and the time, right? And just in that scenario, we've got three different entities trying to figure out who's going to help somebody to get a notice to cut the grass, right? So it just lessens that confusion and puts them on the same playing field as all of their other neighbors. So yeah, I think it's the confusion more than any type of real cost, right? It's, it's confusion, consistency, those types of things.
And my other quick, can I ask another question? Do these, in these 10 island properties, are those all of the island properties currently in the city? Or are there others that are not yet being?
This is all of them for now, yeah. So I can state, we, we did a run, in fact, I have a statement that I'll get to a little bit. We had a run out too long ago when we did a group like this, similar. At that time, I think all but two were annexed into the city. And then since that time, these are new ones that have come in over that time. And I guess I can real quick, you know, we try to, the code says we should avoid creating island annexations or creating islands in our, within the city. And we do that, the way we do that is if you've got a property sitting here and it's a peninsula, right? Like the county property comes in and city limits is kind of surrounded on three sides. They're all fine because they're a peninsula. If this property here decides they want to annex and it's going to mean that this little property in the middle is now an island, the city code requires that we notify that property owner and say, hey, the neighbors are submitted an application to annex. If they annex, you're going to become an island and you're going to become subject to the city's development code on, or the city's municipal code on annexing islands into the city. So we do give that courtesy notice, kind of heads up. We also, my staff also recommends that the neighbors that are annexing into the city at that time also reach out to them. Can't make them, but like, hey, you might reach out to neighbors, see if they're interested in annexing this time. If they annex at the same time, it'd be one application fee as opposed to an additional cost for them to have to do it themselves. And annexation's $3,000 plus the cost of your planners and everything else. So, you know, when your neighbor is annexing into the city, if you've thought of annexing, that's a good time to do it. And so we always just encourage them to be neighborly, reach out, maybe there's some shared cost or whatever. But we can't force them, but per our code, we notify them, let them know, give them opportunity to come to the hearing, provide testimony and whatnot. So that's kind of the extent that we go to. But sometimes that doesn't happen. They decide to just not do anything, they stay there, they become an island and the rest of that annexation gets, gets approved and they come into the city and then we get these little islands. So that's what's happened over the last seven, eight years or so since we did the last round of islands annexations. So again, it's not a bad thing and we try to avoid it, but you can't always avoid it. The property owners have their right to do what they want to do. And, but at some point, you get enough of them that we go through. I will add, yeah, I don't think it's inappropriate, I don't want to get too far off base here. I want to stay within bounds of what we're talking about. But the code doesn't speak to when island should be annexed. Being that this is the second round that I've gone through of looking at properties and seeing these islands being formed and then going through the process of annexing these islands and talking to the property owners and all that. I, my preference going forward is going to be probably to bring something back to the planning commission and the council at some point to put a version of the code that says, as soon as that scenario happens where one property annexes and creates an island, that the city immediately starts the process of the island annexation. And that's what triggers an island annexation, public hearing, and we go through it immediately rather than we'll just wait a few years, wait a few years, I want to get enough of them, then we'll do it. Because there's really nothing in the code about timing of when we do it. So I'm, I'm going to look to put something in the code that will, will define when we do island annexations. And it's at the time that they're created, immediately thereafter, as soon as possible thereafter, we'll start the proceedings for the island annexation. I think it's more fair, more consistent, gives better explanation. And I think for the property owner that is being considered to become an island, if they know that, maybe they're more willing to go ahead and jump in and annex at the time and not even become an island in the first place. Or at least they're better informed of what that process might look like. So I think there's room for improvement in our code on this, some small improvement to give more consistency. But for now, the practice that we've been doing for years and years and years is we just wait till there's a handful enough to make it worth our time and worth our while to have a special hearing and go out for a ballot measure and all that. And so there's kind of the economy of scales and there's no exact number there either. So I think we could fix that.
You have another question?
On the findings of fact, number five, it says that it indicates the city is able to provide water and sewer. That probably is in terms of a capacity issue. But my question would be, are, are the water and sewer available in front of the properties? Or is it 500 feet away or?
Yeah, now when public works look to this, it's going to be along the most adjacent street. So some of these have a longer driveway and I don't know that we go down the driveway on all of these, but it's going to be at the road. All of them have it on the road adjacent to them.
That answers.
But I know a couple of individual properties do have some longer driveways or setback a little bit, but.
Actually, again, when I thought of that question, I was looking at Thirteenth Street. The water and sewer goes down thirteen.
Okay.
I have a question. Are any of the properties that is within this, these 10 properties, any of them go through this process before and not become annexed?
Two, yeah. My future comments, 500 Pioneer and 498 North Ninth Street were considered for annexation in 2018, but were not approved by the city council, so they didn't even go out for a vote.
Okay, alright.
I have several questions. First of all, what triggered this? Like why are we, why is the planning commission considering this now?
It's a little outside of the staff report, but when we get to the applicant comments, I can address that then if that's okay. I want to stick to, let's hear.
Okay. I, I find some, there seems to be some discrepancies in the staff report regarding which code language we're using, which map we're using. Like in annexation criteria and findings, A, cities applying heavy's properties annexed upon annexation, the default zoning for properties will be applied. Does that mean the comp plan zoning or the current zoning? That's not, I mean, default zoning is not really clear because later we refer, I mean, I think the map, isn't the map that you provide, isn't that the comp map that we put these plots on?
That's the zoning map, the comp map.
Current zoning map?
That's the current city zoning map. It doesn't show the comp plan shadings for color, it got a little busy with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the intent is that if, again, if the current zoning for the comp plan is low-density residential, L D R, can I point?
Yeah.
Low-density residential, like, I'm going to just show, sorry for people at home, but for people in the room, I'm just going to point the large area because it's easier. So this area is low-density residential. If any of these properties along here were to annex, they would automatically go to the default and the default for low-density or for low-density residential is R one. That's our low-density residential within city limits. Medium-density residential would go to the R two. That's our medium-density residential within city limits. And then we don't have any comp plan, high-density residential, but if we did, it would come in as R three. Industrial is a little bit more open. Industrial comes in as either low-density, high-density, do your industrial park. We give a little to the applicant to make a request when they apply. In this case, we've just said low-density residential because it's the lowest impact, right? So we've made some assumptions there that the default would be low-density residential or low-density industrial. Let me take this opportunity to talk about that 10th property that's on the list, which is a small piece of public right of way. You see this little red square right here? It's actually a public right of way, it's heated to the city of Flemish. But for whatever reason, back when it got incorporated, that legal description was left out or incorrect. So it created this little blip right here. So it's not, it's, so there's really nine privately owned properties, but then there's this 10th property, public right of way, and it's just fixed on the map. But then county's like, next time you annex, please include this little blip. So the island annexation is like appropriate time, it is a little island. So that one is currently public right of way and it would come in by the default as public.
I'm a little bit concerned about the inaccuracy of the language to really determine which zone each property would be annexed in as. You know, we're just referring to them as default zoning. Okay. But, and also, you know, it kind of highlights the problem of trying to do 10 at a time. Where the cities, obviously, you know, I don't, I don't see there's any reason for the planning commission to, you know, have any problem with that. But for every other individual privately owned property, it doesn't seem like we're really telling them what's going to happen once they're annexed.
So the table on page eight specifies, rather than just use in that general language, the table on page eight is very specific.
Okay, so that proposed.
Six, one, the proposed zoning, yeah.
Alright, that makes sense then.
Yeah, so we try to be more clear there.
Got you. Number five, no comments from the school? Not for summer?
Yeah. If, again, if this was a 100-unit subdivision, I'd be more concerned about what the school's opinion was. But on this small of a unit, I wouldn't anticipate they'd take the time to provide comment. So, and I'm, I don't work with the school district, but I wouldn't be overly concerned either. Again, most of these already have a house on them. I don't anticipate any huge development coming in because of any of these. So I, I don't think there's much to be concerned about there. But I don't want to speak on behalf of the school, but you're right. School staff, I would talk to the superintendent Holliday and she's still working, so. Teachers are out, but the.
Talked with her, but she had no comment at the time.
I don't want to speak for her, but we didn't get comment back, yeah.
Understood.
As far as I'm aware, I mean, even when school is out, I believe the school district is still working, so.
But yeah, I mean, vacation time and all that. Okay, still in section, section C, number nine, you mentioned that map amendment and rezone will be considered with the rezone proceeding after the annexation discussion. I, I assume you're talking about, you know, when we finalize our code language of these in comp plan, comp map, incorporating all of that into the current code, there's going to be several properties that are rezoned. You're saying that would also happen at that time for all of these annexed properties?
No, this is more, sorry, and that is a little confusing. We used to take property owners through a second hearing process after they got annexed. Then we would make them go through a separate hearing to get rezoned from like county industrial to city light industrial. We'd also charge them an additional application fee for that hearing and that whole process with our code to be able to merge those together, so it's one process. And so when they're applying for an annexation, they're also applying for the new zoning. And so that's what that's trying to say, although you're right, it doesn't say it very clearly. The map amendment, which is changing the map, the zoning map, so changing it from county industrial to city light industrial. And that rezoning from county industrial to city light industrial, I would say would be considered with the rezone proceedings after the annexation discussion. It, it's going to happen, right? So it's not really up to proceedings, if it's approved. And we go through the vote and the vote gets approved and the comp plan map is going to be amended based on the decision of the annexation. We're not going to go through a separate procedure, separate hearing for that.
Right, but your comment about properties being grandfathered in, I had a question about that. Does that mean by grandfather, do you mean that they'll just be existing non-compliant until?
Pre-existing non-conforming.
Non-conforming, yeah.
So the use is grandfathered.
Use it, okay.
So for example, setbacks, right? Different county setbacks, city setbacks, you know, it's a non-conforming use until they have to do some sort of, or they want to do some sort of construction or development.
So as soon as they want to pull a permit, it's going to trigger a lot of stuff for them?
Potentially, yeah, I mean, depending on what's built. You know, the, even though it's in county, the county's had to do building inspections, I think, out built. I mean, obviously, if you're building something without permits, that's a whole different.
Yep, sure.
But again, the county's default, even if you're building in the county, is they're going to say, oh, you're in with, in the city urban development boundary, they're going to adhere to the city setbacks and all those things. So some of it's timing though, I mean, cities only had setback requirements for 20 years, 25 years. So if you built prior to that, again, those homes are grandfathered in as well, even if they're inside city limits. So, yeah, the grandfathered in is specific to the uses and the structures themselves. Until they want to modify or update something, they're fine. The city's not going to proactively go back and say, hey, your setback's only three foot, which was okay in this county, now it's five foot, you got to move your wall, right? We're just not going to take those, those. We're just not gonna take those, those stances, it'll be grandfathered.
Understood.
Briefly add to Chris's point, how long do you think these cities, or these apologies, these properties have been within the UGV?
Well, since the UGV was created.
Okay, so for a while.
So eighty.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six.
Okay, so they've likely been required to comply with city development code requirements for that time by the county.
Item F, review criteria. Jumping down to number four. Annexation of property must benefit the city and the community of Flometh. I, you know, reading through the staff report, really trying to figure out, why is the city doing this at this time? You know, because it seems like we're really setting aside all of our code issues that we, you know, really had the, put to the pedal for a long time. And now we are doing this. So I was trying to figure out, you know what, what is the city, why is the city really doing this now? And it's noted at the beginning of the staff report, but also here clearly, benefit of the city of Flometh by adding tax revenue. How does the ti, the city collect tax revenue from current residences?
So the county tax assessor assesses the property in the county. And then they collect the taxes on behalf of all of the taxing entities.
Property taxes.
Property taxes, those, your property taxes, so city, urban real district, county, school, library, all down the west, right? So all of the taxing entities have their tax rate. Benton County collects all of the property tax from the property owner and then divides that out to each of the different taxing districts. Right, so these property owners are still being taxed, and I actually had that in my other statement, but they're still being taxed, they're still, they're not paying any property taxes, they'll all tell you they're paying property taxes. But they're paying prop taxes to all of the other entities that are providing services except for the city, right? Because they're not inside city limits, so that's the distinction. So we would see, at the time that they're actually annexed, right, the immediately or three years for residential, we would see a small increase in property taxes coming into the city coffers to pay for police and parks and all those general fund services that the city provides to its residents. We collect revenue from these properties to be able to provide those services, which would be a benefit to the city.
City also collects taxes inadvertently, kind of a roundabout way, through the water billing. There are, there have been numerous increases over the last couple of years in order to help fund the city's new water programs. So annexing in these new residences, they would see not just an increase in their, their land taxes. They'd also be paying that tax through their, their water usage and sewer usage as well.
Yeah, so, you know, water, water utilities is a separate enterprise, it pays for the service of providing water. I wouldn't consider it a tax, it's a transaction. If you hook into city water and you use city water, then you pay for that city water.
It's not legally officially a tax, but.
That's, I mean, there's a distinction between a tax and a fee, right? It's a utility fee. If a homeowner chooses to not connect into city water, then they wouldn't have any increase in their water use or their water, you know, water costs. So that would be a, an option to the property owners if they decided that they wanted to purchase city water and pay for that service, and they could do that. So currently, there's a provision in the city charter that does not allow a property that's not inside city limits to receive city services unless it's approved by a vote of the electorate. So right now, even if a property owner wanted to get city water, city sewer, they would not be allowed to per the city charter. So again, by annexing in, it kind of opens the door and allows them to do that if they so choose, but there wouldn't be the requirement.
So these properties wouldn't be required to connect to city water or sewer? But if they wanted to, that could be incorporated as part of this annexation process?
Wouldn't do as part of the annexation process, but after they were annexed, then they could apply to give a meter install, that's what they want to do.
And are there any other fees associated with that process? Like a hookup fee?
Yeah, there's a system development charge and then a meter installation fee, and then there's a monthly utility fee like everybody pays.
Understood. And you also mentioned.
I do, sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you, okay, because I wanna make sure I'm on the, for, for water, that's absolutely the case. There's nothing in the city's code that requires somebody hook into city water. There is for sewer, right? For sewer, there are provisions in the city's development code that would trigger the requirement to hook into city sewer once it was accessible to those properties. The city council has chosen to be, I will say, a little selective about when they've enforced that and when they've not. Because they recognize that that's a hardship on homeowners that they've not wanted to enforce. Um, I'm thinking, I don't wanna get too out trapped, but up on Eback Hill, again, for example, there's the south side of the hill has a lot of individual private septic systems on there. There's sewer within the appropriate distance from one of the homes, but not all of the homes. So if we required that first home to do it and extend sewer, now it would be within the next home, so then they'd have to, need to have this domino effect where eventually all those homeowners at a time would have to connect into city sewer. And it's pretty expensive, it's on a hillside, so. Anyway, there's a lot of reasons why the city councils looked at that project in the past and decided not enforce that portion of the code on those homeowners. But again, if the homeowner wanted to attach into city sewer, if their private septic failed. Currently, they'd have to go to the city council and then we'd have to go for a vote of the people to be able to extend sewer services to these property owners, or they would have to annex into the city and then get sewer extended their property, so. And but there is a provision where the city could, kind of like the sidewalk issue, the city does have the right to require a property to hook into sewer if there's some type of health concern or health hazard or something like that were to come up. But not water, right? But I I don't wanna say the city couldn't force that because our code would allow us to do that. But I would say, again, it's similar to the sidewalk where the city council uses that as a tool where it's necessary to take care of some public good. But they're not just willy nillys and now you gotta connect, now you gotta connect, right?
Yeah, understood, I just, again, kind of concerned about how imprecise the language is that we're actually gonna be voting on and you know, there's no stipulation about any of those particular items. If I was one of these residences or one of these landowners, I'd be concerned about each of these topics, and that's why I'm bringing them on, at least to discuss.
You know, the blank languages, they're gonna be susceptible to the municipal code and development code, so that language in there and all of that's in the code. I can't by any means in a staff report list out all the provisions there, so.
I understand.
As a blanket statement, once annexed in the city, they're a city property and they're subject to all of the city's requirements for city properties. And that's an entire development code and municipal code worth of things that could impact them. So I, I get where you're coming from, but obviously, we can't list out every situation, right?
Yeah, so we can at least discuss it.
You're also gonna take this up regardless of what our decision is or our recommendation.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Next week, aren't they?
Uh, the eleventh. Three weeks.
August eleventh.
Next week.
Anwar, at this point in time? Okay, it's now time for the applicant's presentation, you have the subject presentation as the applicant?
I do, I just have a statement and I'll read through it real quick. This is not necessarily directly related to the, the staff report where it's looking criteria by criteria. Um, but this is just on behalf of the city. First, thank you for reviewing this application, annex these ten island properties into the city of Flometh. Proposed islands are created when surrounding properties are annexed in the city, leaving one or more unincorporated county lots completely surrounded by quote-unquote city lots. These islands have access to and receive the same city provided benefits as neighboring properties such as public safety, public streets, bus service, nuisance enforcement, public parks, trash collection, and other quality of life benefits. However, they don't help pay for these services by way of paying city property taxes. These types of public services are non-excludable, meaning someone cannot be excluded from their benefits due to non-payment. In economics, a free rider scenario is created when someone benefits from a resource, good or service without paying for it, often related, related to public goods that are non-excludable. This is a common issue that cities deal with. The city of Flometh last annexed island properties in two thousand and eighteen. At that time, twelve island lots existed within city limits and all but two. Uh, as I mentioned, five hundred Pioneer and four ninety-eight North Ninth Street were approved for annexation by the city council and later voted on and approved by the Flometh electorate. Since that time, these two islands remain and an additional seven tax lots have become islands. And one small right away I referenced up on North Seventh Street was discovered to have not been included in the city limits after its dedication in nineteen eighty-four. Uh, thank you to Michael Bidwell for his research on that one and finding that. Uh, the remaining parcels were notified that they were becoming island parcels in either two thousand and eighteen or two thousand and twenty-two. All the properties could be serviced with water, sewer, and other city services at this time. Property owners make all manner of arguments for why their property should remain outside city limits. But ultimately comes down to the typically not wanting to pay their property tax state, or not wanting their property tax statement to increase. Although we can all certainly appreciate not wanting our taxes to go out, advocates for periodic island annexations would argue that it's not fair that a handful of property owners within city continue to not help pay for non-excludable city services like everyone else. Upon annexation, each property's taxes will increase based on its assessed value. Which is most, in most cases, will be very similar to what neighboring property owners are currently paying. With a city tax rate of five point three cents per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. Each landowner would see a property tax increase of five dollars thirty cents for every thousand dollars of assessed value as determined by Benton County Tax Assessors. It's important to note that these property owners currently do not pay property, or currently do pay property taxes to the nine-one-one emergency service district, Benton County, Benton County Extension District, Benton County Library, Benton County Local Option Levy, the Benton County Soil and Water, Flometh Fire and Rescue, Flometh School District, Lynn Benton Community College, Lynn Benton Lincoln E S D. That's where they do pay taxes. They also pay their state share of the Flometh School Bonds, both of them, twenty-ten and twenty-twenty-two. But Benton Community Bonds, one previous and one in twenty-twenty-two, and the Fire and Rescue Bond in twenty sixteen. However, they do not pay property taxes to the city of Flometh or Flometh Urban Renewal. But most of the properties have been developed and are receiving the benefits of city services and have been for years. Uh, proposed for annexing island properties, the Flometh Municipal Code sets forth the procedure for annexing island properties in section eighteen, one thirty-five, zero, three, zero, L. Um, I won't read through all that, I included it and I'll provide this. Uh, noted here, again, properties with commercial or industrial zoning and uses would be brought to the city limits following majority vote of the electorate. Passage of approving ordinance by the city council uh, to address this issue of new and higher taxes on residential properties. State law precludes annexing or imposing new taxes on properties with residential zoning or uses for at least three years following approval of the voters, or when the property is sold, whichever comes first. Uh, council priority, uh, this is to answer your question, councillor Justin, or commissioner Justin, sorry. Uh, city council has expressed an interest in addressing the equity issue, which is embodied in its adopted strategic plan. Objective one point two point two of the two thousand and twenty-five Flometh Strategic Plan is to quote, identify and eliminate unincorporated territories within city limits. The action item under that is to identify and annex unincorporated territory within the corporate limits of the city through the island annexation procedures. So again, it's council priority and that's kind of the why at this time, it's because the council's made it a priority within their strategic plan for two thousand and twenty-five. Um, I'll just finalize, I thank you for consideration of this application at this time.
Okay, uh, is there any clarifying questions from the members of the commission based on the applicant's presentation? Okay. At this point, we're going to call for public testimony. As we indicated before, um, we're gonna limit it to five minutes. And we're gonna go ahead in order of, starting with those that are in favor. And please state your name and your city of residence. And Anita, I'm not gonna slur it, I'm sorry.
Just the way it's spelled, Azarenko.
Azarenko, you'd like to, you'd like to start. After, after Chris gets a table.
Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak. Anita Azarenko. And I'm the owner of property at five hundred Pioneer Street and it was not annexed. And so I'm, I wanna thank sitting in with your workman for the time that he has taken to resolve an issue that had not been resolved in my property since two thousand and two, when Starlight Village went in, so I appreciate your collaboration and the effort that you put into finally getting that taken care of. He listened and became aware of the negative impacts of the development from flooding, fence being destroyed, and an easement that the city had to now have because of encroachment of the development at that time of construction. So, it's been a hard journey with Starlight Village above me. But I have come full circle since two thousand and eighteen and in support of that annexation with a caveat that Chris has already mentioned. Typically, design standards require that both sides of the street have sidewalks. Next to my house on five hundred Pioneer Street, the east side has a sidewalk, the west side, which is city property next to the Pioneer Street, and then my fence and my property. That's four hundred feet of approximately four hundred feet of fence. And if I was required to put in a sidewalk, you can imagine what the cost of that would be to me. When we haven't had a chance to connect yet, it may have been the requirement of Starlight Village to put that sidewalk in, and it wasn't at that time. I don't know what the design standards were at that time, but I suspect that they were, they have sidewalks on both sides. But I don't feel it should be my responsibility to put that in. Let's see here. Therefore, I want to say I support the condition of approval in the staff report. And that condition, just to reiterate, no properties annexed into the city through this island annexation process shall be required to install sidewalks along their adjacent property lines until such time that the property owner submits an application for development. So I support that condition of approval. I, I do appreciate you bringing up the issues related to water. I am on Corvallis Water, I'm one of the few places where the line runs right through my property, so I, I receive city of Corvallis Water, and I am pleased to hear that I will not be paying a fee for water because I'm on Corvallis Water. So I was gonna request that, not only for me, but for others who currently don't receive city water, that there be a condition of approval, that they not be required to pay for that, but it sounds like that's taken care of, so. Lastly, I would like to say, I have a ninety-one-year-old mother who lives outside of Flometh. And we've had to call emergency services a number of times, and I will concur with you that there is chaos when two emergency vehicles show up, Flometh shows up first, thank God. And then Benton County has to come and pick up where they, and they have to pass the torch. Sure would be a lot easier as I age to be able to have one service, knowing that it can come in less than two minutes. Um, and so that's another reason why I see the potential benefit for being annexed with the condition of approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great points.
Okay. Is there any other testimony in favor that might still be wanting to speak or submitted applications to speak? Okay. Now we'll move on to testimony opposed to it. And again, state your name and the city that you reside in. The first one is Robert Bryanson Workman.
Brian.
Brian, Brian?
I'm sorry, Brian.
What, Robert?
Oh, my God, that hurt.
Okay, now just gonna remind you, you have five minutes.
Man, we're stark. First thing is you don't address, you need to address the economic issue. You're lumping all these ten properties into one group, not addressing the economics of each individual property owner, which should be a consideration. You know, sure, I'd love to have a paved driveway, you're talking fifteen thousand bucks the last time I priced it. And that's not chump change. But there's your own benefit to being annexed into the city. For the last twenty-four years, I've been billed for drainage and a hundred percent of the water that deludes into my property is from the city. And I've been. And I've been paying to deal with it, and that's okay. Haven't complained once, I'm dealing with it. So I don't see any benefit to it. And what was it, 5.3% per thousand for the?
5.3 cents, or 5.30, sorry, 5.30.
5.30 per thousand, that's a lot of money. There's just, there's no benefit, there's no benefit whatsoever that I can see. It doesn't make sense, but I know they're going to do what you're going to do. Hopefully, you'll be considerate of the ramifications of the expense of it, and you know, I'm on a, I've been there 24 years, I'm on a, I'm on a fixed income, and you know, 1,287 bucks, what I was getting in social security, and they just took 187 out of that for Medicare that I don't even need. So hopefully, you'll consider that your equation, and God, I hope you didn't put that language free rider in that application to the state. That upsets the heck out of me because all I've been doing is paying. So I think you need to put quite a bit more thought into that aspect of it. And I think that's all I got for you. I love it here. Thank you.
All right, just a second, soon as I get my, my phone to do what it's supposed to do. There we go. Another individual that is speaking opposed, Ms. Williams? Charlotte Williams?
Yeah, sure.
Indicate your city of residence as well?
Yes.
And again, I'll just remind you, five minutes.
I'll try.
Okay.
My name is Charlotte Spiny Williams, and I live at 640 South 19th Street, but I'm representing 700 and 714. 700 is where my stepmom lives, my parents were, and unfortunately, she's been ill and not able to come tonight. And then the other 714 is a property I co-own with my brother that we inherited after our parents passed. So we don't use city services. I'm like, Brian, I don't use, well, yes, but I don't use any city services. I don't use the bus, the police, we call the county, Flemish Police Department comes right in behind the county, I've only used it a couple times. Fire Department, I've only called from problems at Mill Pond Crossing because my property is right up next to them. City Park, I don't use it, like I said, but it's service. I take care of my own property. I clean the street because the month of June, the City of Flemish cleaned the street. I'll say after the end of June. But I have three huge oak trees, so I take care of that, I maintain them, I cut them, take care of all the property, those three properties. So they would not benefit at all. City of Flemish would be benefited from the extra taxes, but I received nothing, and I've lived there 36 years. So it's about it.
All right, we have one neutral.
Ask if there's anybody else.
Oh, is there anybody else in opposition? Okay, come on, come on up. Speaker, give me your name.
Welcome, 317, 17th is my address in Flemish here. I came as a neutral person because I'm not a property owner associated with any of this. However, my property is adjacent or not adjacent, I guess, nearby. It seems to me that the arguments or the discussion we've had tonight has been, identifying on the staff report was not something I saw prior to this meeting, so that was good for me to listen to. Islands in the city are, you know, seemingly anomaly, how did they happen? You know, I think it's important that we do include them, even if the services aren't being provided or aren't being used, it's just an attribute, because eventually, the properties might be sold and then the services will be used. Indeed, it seems that for some of these properties, tax revenue is the main motivation, which is the nature of municipality, right? I mean, that's what they do. In regards to the light industrial places, I don't see the benefit. They, if they're a light industrial, they're not necessarily using water or sewer, particularly the ones in here, they don't seem to be per se used in that manner. If they were to be taken out of the upcoming, I guess maybe in May of 26, that seems to be, makes sense because they're not a residential, but they are just industrial use. It seems to me that it's the right thing to do to get the city to be a whole, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to it. Thank you.
Do we have any more testimony in neutral? Okay, does the applicant wish to, I hereby close that portion, does the applicant wish to rebuttal any of the comments from the testimony?
I think appropriate is I'll just add that, just for information, about 47% of the city's general fund goes towards public safety. It goes directly into the police department's budget, and everybody that lives within even a two-mile radius of the City of Flemish benefits from the City of Flemish having a police department and having a police. So I disagree pretty strongly with the notion that you don't benefit from that because you're not up to city water or city sewer, you don't go to the park, where public safety is just under half of the general fund, the tax money that's going to be collected from these residents, just under half is going to go to police force, and that absolutely benefits every single property owner here, whether you've called the police or you've not, you've been protected by police safety that the City of Flemish provides. So I just disagree with that argument on the public safety standpoint, and again, it's just under half. So other than that, though, I understand the considerations on individual finances or individual, you know, homeowners and what their finances are. Unfortunately, that's not probably a criteria that we can look at, is individual financial situations. And then on the comment on the industrial, I would say that these industrial sites are developed, they do have development on there, so they do have value, and again, they're receiving the same benefit of police protection, public safety as the residential properties are, which is why they were included as well. So that's it, that'd be the only rebuttal, just on those three comments.
Does the commissioners have any additional questions of staff?
Does Benton County have a, like a senior tax exemption or any type of programs for people that are seniors or on fixed incomes?
On property taxes?
Property taxes, yeah.
Not that I'm aware of, off the top of my head, not that I'm aware of.
Six, seven, and eight here. You're talking properties, the numbers, yeah. Are they all next to each other?
In the weeds a little bit, but we're saying they're surrounded, they are surrounded collectively, but not individually by city. So is, is it appropriate then to annex them? Because on, well, number seven, on two sides, they're not surrounded by city property, or an eight and six, on one side they're not. I don't know, I could say that might be getting in the weeds, but it just occurred to me. And then also, I don't know, nine and 10, I'm not sure exactly where they are, if that's an issue of the same sort. The other five, for sure, are, you know, separate from each other, or, well, it looks like they are. Just a question, is that technically, are they surrounded, I guess, what you're saying?
Yeah, so nine and 10 are immediately adjacent to each other, six, seven, eight are in a line adjacent on 19th Street, they're neighboring properties. And I'll look actually for a legal definition, but the definitions in Minnesota Code of island annexations is if property is entirely circled, I'd argue it's not each individual property. If a grouping of projects creates an island, it's the exact same situation as if an individual tax lot. So I, I would say, yeah, and I would say that in 2018, we had a similar situation where groupings of properties created islands, and they were annexed through this process. But I don't know if you have a different, more specific definition you want to refer to.
I would say the statute is the same as your municipal code, and neither is very clear. It leaves a lot of room for local interpretation. So I think you could read it in the way that you have in the past, you could read it as you're questioning it now. I think you have a precedent for reading it the way that Chris has read it. He read it that way in 2018. Yeah, so it seems that that would stick with your precedent.
Just to kind of follow up on that, isn't below eight city properties, city tax lots, and then to the right and to the left are both city tax lots? So they are actually an island, but it's a group with, of an island?
That's, I think that's the argument Chris is making, yes.
Yeah, the six, seven, and eight combined are completely surrounded. I think the point Commissioner Hunsinger is maybe is six is not completely surrounded because there's an unincorporated property immediately to the south of it, which is number seven, and eight is not completely surrounded because immediately north of it is not. So if you look at each of them individually, they're not, but as a block, they are an island that's been created. And again, I go back as far as precedence goes, when the property immediately south of number eight annexed into the city, six, seven, and eight were all provided notice that they were being created an island because the annexation was taking place. And so our, we've been very consistent, even prior to 2018, I would argue that even if it's in a grouping, if an island's created, it's an island.
Well, you could make the same argument about nine and 10, and it looks like, I mean, I don't know what our notification criteria was, you know, it just says pre-2017 on your table, but that would have been several many years ago. I don't suppose there's any reminders or anything like, hey, we're eventually going to have this hearing to annex you in. It would just get the one notification, right?
Notice where it's stuck to both properties, yeah, both properties received the notice.
When they became an island.
When they became an island per our code, and then for this hearing for tonight as well, yeah.
Yeah, so just as clarification, all of these properties on the list, I mean, except for the city-owned, dedicated city of Flemish, they've all been notified?
Yes.
Do we, is there any way we could see a copy of that notification? I'm just curious what?
Yeah, they're in the planning files for each of those, so I'd have to go back and see when the adjacent property was annexed, and then it would be in that planning file.
Or do you mean the notice for tonight?
Tonight. The notice for tonight?
Yeah, it's on the city's website for proceedings for this hearing tonight.
And we only had two responses back, one for and one against.
Two written prior to the staff report being written, yeah.
Any other verbal responses or?
I received a phone call from Charlotte, but I wasn't able to return back, and I'll apologize. I won't tell you about my world recently, but I did apologize, but I didn't hear from Charlotte, I did hear a voicemail from Charlotte, and I didn't respond to her.
And was it for or against? I mean, I guess it's kind of a judgment call.
Questions about the tax lots and things, oh. She actually showed up to our previous meeting when we originally had this hearing scheduled, and she left a message, and I told her I would get back to her, and I didn't get back to her, so that's why I'm apologizing, I should have got back to her. But we heard from her this evening and her concerns, I think.
Where are we at, are we at deliberations yet?
No, no.
Clarification question.
Clarification, okay. I gotta go over the whole retinuance thing and all the words.
I'll wait for deliberation. Deliberation.
Okay, can we know why the city chose not to annex the 500 Pioneer Street property last time around? Is that too far afield?
We, we do. The property owner came and testified before the city council, and, yeah, and the mayor at the time decided to take them off of the list because they'd come and provided testimony.
Thank you. You said there was another one too, right?
One on Pioneer, and similarly, those two individuals came and testified, so both of them were taken off the list.
Is there any requests for a continuance? No requests for continuance, there has, well, is there any requests for continuance? Okay, then I can move on. Is there any request to hold the record open? All right, so I'm asked the applicant if you waived the right to submit additional written argument?
Yes.
You waived it, okay? All right, now the public hearing is closed. Now deliberation. So I will go ahead and open the floor to deliberation. Commissioner Hunsinger, do you want to start?
I do know to stay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, you're welcome, you're welcome to stay. This is all, this is all public.
Well, okay. As was discussed on the 500 Pioneer Street and the other one where they requested not to be, and they were. When Starlight Village was approved, it was at the end of, when I was mayor, so that would have, they said 2002, so I was done in 2000, at the end of 2001, I think. So it's been that long since this property could have been annexed. And these, well, at least six, seven, and eight for sure, I kind of, well, oh, nine and 10, yes, the only reason nine and 10 is to do with Mill Pond. Well, I guess six, seven, eight are also made an island, and that's only been in the last few years. So I guess I would suggest that these that have requested not to, kind of in keeping what, with what we understood happened in 2018, that we not recommend that the council approve them for annexation. I'm not sure about four and five. I do know about one, and then these others, I guess I'm not sure, two and three, I'm not sure about those either. But where this, these all nine, six through 10 have to do with being next to Mill Pond, it's only very recently that those have been, become islands. So my suggestion was not to annex them yet.
I agree with the sentiment. There's obvious advantages to being annexed in, you know, particularly if you've been waiting for this, as Anita had mentioned, there's a lot of benefit for her. But there's also a lot of negative effects for some people that don't want to get annexed in. And that's why I was asking about the responses, because it seems pretty clear, like, if we're going, if we're going to parse it out by each property, it would, it seems pretty obvious, of course, we would approve 500 Pioneer, and we would amend the motion or whatever to exclude 610 South 19th. amend the motion or whatever to exclude six, 10, South 19. What about the rest of these that we haven't even heard from? You know, I'm not sure. I feel comfortable just annexing them in just because they, you know, don't have a voice for or against the city doing this when the city is, has made it clear like we want the tax revenue from these properties to support public services that are not meant to be run for a profit, right? We, we don't run a fire department for a profit. We don't have police departments for a profit. I understand the equity argument, but you know, these, these properties have been county properties forever, longer than Flohman's been in town. So this isn't like a new scenario. You know, I, I don't understand what has triggered this other than like, hey, we've got enough properties now to talk about them. So I'm not really sure what to do about these, the other properties where we don't really have for or against from the property owner.
Yes, please.
When we're discussing including properties or not including properties in the annexation, I just recommend to all commissioners to keep the criteria in mind, right? Because there's an application for this annexation. And whether, you know, you were supporting it or opposed to it, I just recommend tying that support or opposition, if at all possible, to those code criteria. So, you know, maybe access to facilities or another code criteria.
I think I also agree with the sentiments that have been expressed, but I, same thought was going through my mind is that whether or not someone submits a written opposition or comes in and testifies is not among the criteria. It's supposed to shed light, their testimony and their written testimony is supposed to shed light on the criteria that we apply. But it is not a criterion that the homeowner or the property owner objected or asked to be included. I just think the decision as explained to me about Ms. Azarenko's property was made one level above us. And I'm not sure it was made under consideration of the applicable criteria. Somebody just said include me out and mayor said that's a good idea. It's what it sounds like to me. Our remit is apply the criteria. I think the one that's most important to me, because we are a public body and we are invoking public policy, is it's bad public policy to have islands within the city boundaries. And it's bad public policy because when, if no one's responsible for property, then everyone's responsible for the property. And by including these properties into the city, we are spreading the responsibility, expanding the responsibility for these non-excludable services. I also think as a property owner in Flohman for the last 24 years, I've yet to see the, I don't think the driver of my water bill is water usage, where I see the increases or other things that have been added to that. Whether or not that's good public policy or not, it's not, again, it's not our remit. But I don't think it's a matter of you add some more property that's already adjacent to your property, add that into the city and suddenly your water bill is going to go way up because you're using more water. I don't, I don't think that's the driver. So I come back to the, the objectives that, and the criteria that we do apply. And I just feel like I had a very compelling argument that the public good that everyone receives should be shared by everyone who receives it. I think that's the basic public policy that we apply here. And so that's the criterion that's most important to me is the benefit to the city because it's all of us. It's not the benefit to the city manager's office or to the police department or the fire department or any sub, sub entity that it's all of us as a city. And that's why, that's why I talk in terms of public policy. And I absolutely believe, you know, based on my experience, I've been a pro temp judge for 15 years now. And based on that experience, I can tell you that the value of police services and the value of fire services is not just stopping, you know, arriving at crime scenes or putting out fires. It's the preventative impact of those services. And, and you can't say just because I haven't called the police to my home ever and I haven't ever had the fire department show up to put off a fire in my house. But it doesn't mean I haven't benefited. And everybody in the city benefits. So for that reason, I'll, I'll be supporting the motion to approve the application in its entirety.
Anybody else have any deliberation?
Well, I think we should also consider the burden on the property owners. Because it is poor policy that's got us into this situation. And these property owners, you know, have done nothing either way. I agree that we should amend our code to automatically trigger, you know, that these properties be annexed once they become an island, like immediately. But the city has not done that in the past and we are, we're in the situation we're in because of, you know, whatever policies have been in place over the numbers of years. So I, I think that should be considered too, that, that it's, it's as the, as the body of Flohman's government, that is the public outreach portion. You know, that's, that's part of our commission, like we are the outreach arm of Flohman government. I think we should also consider that, that the public's come and testified, they've told us what they like and what they don't like. You know, yes, we are measuring against the criteria, but that's also part of our job is to hear the public.
Well, one, one of the things you said earlier about there was, there were several that we didn't hear nothing one way or the other. To me, tells me that they, they don't care what you do or what we do. So for me, that's, being neutral is, it's okay with them. I mean, otherwise I think they would have come. But my partner here, not my partner, but my co-chair here is, although I still think, I still wonder about the question of the, what an island is. But as you guys all know, I was pretty much not happy here in the last few months about the direction we took in, in a particular issue. And it was because we didn't follow what the rules say. So I, I will support recommending annexation to all of them. Because that is what the criteria is.
I'm, uh, let me see. What's before us is has, has the applicant, in this case, the city, fulfilled all the requirements and met the criteria to forward this to the city council. I would say yes. I would also say that the, that the city council has, will take up the considerations. I'm sure the individuals that have spoken this evening will speak again at the city council. And at that time, the public's elected elected members of the city council then will be able to exercise their right as an elected individual. But as an appointed individual being required to follow the criteria that was set for this, I have to support it regardless of what I feel in other ways.
Yeah, I concur with that. I also will strongly encourage this commission to get back on track and start finalizing our code language so that we don't run into this problem anymore.
I, I would agree with that.
Well, just, just on that point, we lost another planner. This is the third one. In the two and a half years I've been on the planning commission, this is the third planner. I, I don't know how we can, I, I would like to get it done too.
Let's, let's, let's put this particular thing to bed and then I, I would like to have an opportunity for we can discuss our path forward as it relates to that work that we have before us.
I want to be mindful of both our city attorney's time and the city manager's time if we do that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I would want it, I would want it to be a short, a short period of time. No, no, I think, I think I'll sit at it for 10 minutes and at the end of 10 minutes we'll say we're done. Okay. Does anybody have a motion? Or is there any more discussion? Okay.
I'll move to the findings of fact as presented in the staff report dated July 14th, 2025 for planning file PC 25-03 and approve the application for annexation with the included condition of approval.
Ms. There's your second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, so I think we're done. So let's go to one more thing. Oh, the hold for 21 days. Yeah, well, this is going to come before the
Yeah, this is actually not for him to have to revisit people's
All right, okay. Thank you for your testimony. I encourage you to force your opinions at the next level.
Thank you for your service.
All right. You want to quickly go through your, 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 your activity report and then any other updates we might have as thanks to the planner or, or Michael?
Yeah, just the notice we're adjusting here. You'll see we've continued the pattern, we're using our record numbers opposed to our our planning number or planning commission number. I should continue that, I think it, at least on the staff level and hopefully on your level helps track where things are. And also if we're missing a number in there, you can ask, well, how come we're missing number 15? Where did it go? So anyway, you can go through, we've got several applications that are active and are open. A few that have been finalized. So happy to answer any specific questions on those. I think the, the big ones kind of coming out are a partition up on North 12th Street or just off of North 12th Street. Interesting, we've actually received several public comments on that from surrounding property owners. It's a 250-foot radius that we sent those to and put a sign on the yard for just a fairly simple partition of a irregularly large lot up there. I think I've got my fifth or sixth letter in from neighbors today. And so I'll be taking those consideration and get in a final staff report and decision put out tomorrow. But anyway, just every once in a while, most partitions, maybe we get a neighbor that comes in and asks about it, but to get five written comments hand-delivered or mailed in is a little bit unique for this situation. But nonetheless, it's North 12th Street and there's a lot of activity up there that's concerning. So I'll kind of leave it at that. Happy to answer any specific questions there. Maybe we'll do that first, then give a quick update on staffing and where we're at. Any questions on one through nine? Anything specific listed? Okay, on the staffing side, Michael gave his resignation early last week. He's going to move back to Kansas. He's got some personal things there to take care of. Which is unfortunate, but we wish him all the best. Even before, I'd received notice from Michael on the code update. I've reached out to ask you the West Council of Governments. They've beefed up their planning staff in recent years. So I reached out to them, talked about their ability to take on our code update as a project that their planners could do, which they've agreed to do. So I've got a contract with them. Before I left on my vacation three weeks ago, I did a file dump, gave them everything. So they're reviewing it this week. I'm going to sit down and get a scope and a timeframe from them on what they think it'll take to get that done. So that'll be outside of my time or any future planner. Cog planners will be working on that. And again, a lot of those issues we've talked about as a commission a year and a half, two years ago. It's just a matter of getting to the pen, getting organized, getting it in front of the public in a way that's kind of like a track changes or easy version to go through. And there's a lot there. We went through a lot of information in about a year. So anyway, I'm, I fully anticipate by the end of the year, that'll be ready to get from the public and from the planning commission. So I apologize it's taken this long. We've kind of waited for a planner to get fully up to speed where they could take on some additional tasks or wait for my time to loosen up to be able to do that. It's just not happened in the last year that we've had Michael with us. So just under here.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Say it would take them about a year to kind of work through there?
I don't think it would take them. I think through, by the end of the year, by the end of this year, by the end of the year, though, I think it'll
And, and then the process is to do public outreach on the changes? Or is there a public outreach period or how, how will that work?
There's kind of been a public outreach as it was being developed, kind of in pieces. We hit the farmer's market up last summer. And the time before, we did a few things. So I, there's been some outreach, there's some individual outreach to property owners that, that Michael did as well. So I'd be interested to hear from the commission, if not tonight. Maybe when we have cog come in and start talking through some of their findings of where they're at to have some discussion. So maybe you could kind of think through what additional public outreach we want to do, either with individual homeowners that might be affected or property owners might be affected. If we want to do, you know, timing, if we get in front of the farmer's market again a few more times, you know, what additional engagement we want to have. At the end of the day, as we heard from Commissioner Judson, I mean, you are the committee for input, citizen input. So your role as the planning commission, another one of your roles is to hear from the public on matters related to planning and land use, right? It's, it's not necessarily, all things city-related. So as a police department concern, they can come talk to me or talk to the police chief or the council. But for things related to planning and land use, you're the body for them to come to and to listen to. So that means we need to be being receptive to that and open to that and lighting up that information. So, you know, again, we talked through open houses. You get a few select people to come through. I'd be much more in favor of like going where people already are, farmer's market, other events, Fire District Open House, those types of things that we have done in prior years and trying to find people where they are and present some ideas and float it out there. But again, the public hearing, like tonight's public hearing is really my experience, but that's the most successful you're going to have of having property owners that care come and provide you testimony. Maybe you catch the people at the farmer's market, but you probably won't, you know, catch the people that are most concerned about it. You're just going to have by happen chance, maybe talk to them. But when you provide them a notice in the mail that says we're having a hearing about this topic and your property is going to be impacted, all of a sudden they start doing the research, start finding out, well, it's just all about. And I'm going to find out, I'm going to be at that meeting, I'm going to call the city manager, find out what's going on. So having the public hearings is probably the best way to do that public outreach. And so it may be more of a mindset of we're just going to have a couple of public hearings rather than try to do it all in one night and be done. And again, so maybe instead of, I'm just putting out there, maybe instead of like three or four visits to the farmer's market, we just plan to have two or three public hearings on the topic where the public can come in and talk to us and provide their testimony on the record. Might be more beneficial.
So I, I had experience with a new subdivision ordinance plan in Illinois. And I can't stress enough how important it is to go to where people are and, and, and the amount of information that's in the municipal code or planning is a lot and it's not necessarily easily understood. And I want to push back a little bit that people that care will show up because people that care may not understand what this means. People that care may have jobs or children that they can't come to. So I want to just put like, push back on that, that it's not people that care about what's happening to the city that actually show up and give feedback. What we did is we chunked out the, the, the code or the plan and, and did like guerrilla like meetings, you know, like going to the Rotary Club and going to whatever, just getting on their schedule and just chunking it out. So that's like, this is this section. And this is, because the more people that understand the code, the more people that feel engaged and also part, future participation. So I just want to just stress how important and how willing I am to go to meetings as a commissioner to talk to the, to the public about it. I don't know if farmer's market is the, the, the place, it might be one place, but you know, having a presentation saying this is why it's important, this is when it was last updated, this is why we're doing it now. All of that is, it's, it's really important. And, and maybe a roadshow is a lot to coordinate, but I just want to make sure that everyone knows I'm, I'm willing to do that work because I think it's really important.
I guess this makes me, I'm sorry. You think in terms of uh, like for regular public hearing, it's, what is it, usually a two-week notice? Then, or whatever it is, whatever it is.
Yeah.
We should, I, for, to do something like this, it would be nice to give a lot of time or a lot more time for people to think about and, you know, research or whatever that they feel they wanna do to give them more time to put something together or respond to it rather than the typical two-week notice thing. Cause that, that doesn't give them much time really.
Yeah, those points are well taken, I, I agree with both of those comments entirely, so are, you know, for a change to development code, it's a 35-day notice to Department of Land Conservation Development. And typically, everything that's a note, that notice would go to the general public anyways. For most of those, we say minimum two weeks, but we're getting that out there, you know, a month ahead of time or so, but I, again, I'd stress, I think we definitely need to do the outreach. I, I think my focus on that was, it's the outreach, but more the interest of maybe not limiting ourselves to just one public hearing on our schedule, that I think expanding that to multiple dates. Because for some people, they talk to the farmer's market, they come to the public hearing, they hear the staff report, they're gonna generate more questions, more buzz, and they may not be ready to provide testimony, but they've just heard it for the first time. I think giving them an opportunity to come back a couple of weeks later, a month later with those questions is important, so I, I agree with all that, I I guess what I'm saying is I don't wanna fast-track any of that as much as we want to get it done. I wanna get the code language out there and then talk to you again about what's the best way to get it out to the public. And we've had several conversations about doing that, and we have piecemealed it and put it out in sections in the past, we just need to get back on that boat and get, get it out there again, so.
I mean, I, I I agree with all that, my focus is on before we even get there. I see that we still have multiple working sessions to go through this document.
With COG?
Yes, I mean, multiple working sessions. I think, yeah, we, we talked about it, I it was started when we came on the commission a year and a half ago now, uh, two and a half years ago, isn't it? It started, and so there's been a lot of discussion and there's been a lot of information that, that has been lost from those discussions. And I think in a part because it was just, it was just, it was too big to swallow. We were trying to swallow an elephant and we never had the ability to, to piece it out in pieces enough to be able to do that, so that's really what my concern is, is when we, when are we going to get the opportunity to start seeing drafts of this document? And when we go through to review a draft, that we are able to review a draft in its entirety and giving us multiple iterations to review this draft in its entirety, because I see that there's going to be comments that are gonna need to be incorporated from, from us and it's going to take a cycle to do that and and whether the comments get incorporated or don't get incorporated, or our staff comes back with a with a rebuttal as to why we should not incorporate that. I, I still see it as a, as a very laborious process that we've still got ahead of us, even before we ever get to outreach.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Point, so just to this conversation I've been hearing, another thing that I've seen a few other communities that we represent do, and I haven't been involved in your code amendment process, but I know it's pretty intensive, it's a pretty large-scale update and amendment. Other cities that I've seen go through that process have basically created a webpage on their website with links to previous and future meetings on the topic, whether that's work sessions or council meetings, planning commission meetings, record of, you know, the previous topics of discussion, to your point, so there's one cohesive location where that can be accessed and also an opportunity of a webpage to provide testimony, right? So a, a link to a, you know, email address or another, you know, way of contacting the city, so that's something to consider.
And, and I would pass that off to Chris, asking whether the council governments has that capability.
Yeah, sure sounds nice.
I mean, that would be.
City staff does.
Yeah, yeah.
We do, we, we control our website.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, but this sounds like it's gonna take some management of this particular item, especially if, if, if the council governments, I don't know their full name, I'm just gonna use that term. If the council governments is the ones that is actually doing the editing and all, and all of that, that's probably where this should reside, where they're having, they're have, they have their, because there's gonna be a lot of tracking changes, there's gonna be a lot of decisions to be made.
I, I would say that most of what the council governments is going to be doing is compiling those track changes versions that have already been done by city staff during and or directly after conversations with the planning commission.
Okay.
And compiling those. Right now, we've got about six working documents because we did residential and commercial and back to residential and so, and, and, you know, we took all of the allowed uses and combined them into one allowed use table, so that all, so a lot of what they're doing is just taking all of that and getting it into correct chapter and sections and getting headers and making sure the track changes is set up uniformly, because again, we had you know, if you've dealt with Word in a little bit, you can't just copy and paste track changes from one document to another, right? And so that's a whole nother process and it's just something that I've not had the hours to sit and do, but they do, and so they'll be doing that.
Yeah. And consider we've numbered some things.
It's going to be less of going through our code and making line item changes to our code, it's going to be more compiling a lot of the work that we've already brought to you, you've already seen, and just compiling those documents into something that's.
Okay.
So. So I wanna address, Tim, your comment about lost a lot of stuff over the years. I agree, cause I've, I've had to re-bring things up over meetings in the past where notes have been lost, comments have been forgotten. We do have, everything's been recorded, so we, you know, theoretically, we could go sit back through all of our old meetings. I also have.
I'm glad you said theoretically.
Theoretically. Track changes, I'm glad we didn't do that. I do, I, I keep all of our packets and I keep all my notes on them. I, I need to take the time to go through all of my notes and compile them. But Chris, my question for you is, you mentioned putting together a scope and timeline for that on track. Are you taking any input on that or are you just gonna tell us what is the outcome of that? Does it feel like, you know, the stuff that we don't wanna get missed, we should, we should be talking about that early so that it does get included in scope? Cause there, I mean, it's just clerical work, if you're only just like making everything look the same, make sure the numbers are all good. There, there's more stuff beyond that that I think we have talked about and mentioned incorporating.
Yeah, so everything that they're doing will come back to the planning commission piecemeal, let's look at residential. Let's look at commercial, right, so we'll look at residential, you know, we've been through the allowed use table multiple times and every time we look at it, we make revisions ourselves, right? So at some point, you gotta say, this is what we're doing, we're gonna adopt it, and if we need to make changes within the next year, we'll do it, but at some point, just like tonight's hearing, right, like there's changes I'd like to make regarding island annexations, do we wanna incorporate this into this change? Or do we wanna get these changes we talked about two years ago done? I mean, at some point, there's a stop sign, right, and so we've gotta hit a point where this is good, we know it's not perfect, but it's good and it's a heck of a lot better and more up to date than where we were, let's get this far, let's make a note of what the changes need to still happen and move forward, otherwise we will be in this proverbial range of.
Yeah, but let's not miss anything that we've already talked about and, you know, we've already had plenty of discussion on stuff that just kind of evaporates because it doesn't make it into somebody's notes for meeting that month later.
Yeah, I'd argue those have been few and far between, if that's happening regularly, then I'd be concerned, but I think those are happening, so bring them up. But I, I don't think that's happening on a regular basis.
I, I'd think when, when, once we get it compiled, I've, I've kept everything that I've wrote notes on in it as well.
Yeah.
And what I would do when I get a chunk of it is compare that to what I got. I mean, I don't think he's, you're suggesting that it's gonna come up to us and we're gonna approve it. I, I think we'll have time to deliberate on it, so.
What I'm saying is I don't, I don't wanna get in a situation where something wasn't incorporated, someone brings it up and COG says that's out of scope.
Oh, they're not, no, I don't foresee that. I mean, scope, when I say scope, I mean, what is it that we're paying COG to do? Right, and that's going to be compiling everything, I, I don't know necessarily to pay COG to go through the redline versions of stuff and compare it to your notes and your notes and what they presented, I'm not necessarily need COG to do that. Here, we can get those recorded, so they can make the changes and, and do that, so. You know, at a certain point, we're gonna have, here's your track changes versions, here's everything numbered, and then we'll go through our review process, we just haven't been able to even do that for a year and a half now.
Yeah. So, so then, let me make sure I understand something that clarifies up. We are not seeking any input from them into our code. We are utilizing them to assemble all of the different pieces that we've worked on over the last couple of years, is that a correct statement?
With the exception of some of the new state mandates that have come down from DLCD that we are mandated to put in our code, that they are more familiar with and have the language for, that they will embed in there and they will note that this is coming from whatever, you know.
And, and, and I will go all the way back to the, we will be able to track the track back to the actual legislative uh, document that it is based on or.
Yeah, we'll ask them to reference either the ORS or the.
Make those notes, I think part of my presentation next week will be covering the most recent of those.
Okay.
Most of it's related to housing type stuff, it's not commercial industrial as heavily, so it'll be in the residential district.
Exclusively residential.
So.
And that, and that's, yeah, that's probably the biggest concern of this town is, is our housing.
Now I have a separate question, sort of along the same lines. We, we haven't finished the comprehensive plan, have we?
Is it ever finished? We have updated several sections of it, there are other sections that could use updating if I.
So we have, it's went through the council?
I mean, we did.
I can't remember.
Yeah, we did housing, we did urbanization, we did citizen engagement, we've.
Okay.
Um, urbanization.
Okay.
Natural resources hasn't been looked at in a long time, I'd love to dive in there, but I, I just need staff to be able to do that, so. When the big code update kinda gets through and our planning situation gets more stable, I would love to engage with the city council and planning commission on other chapters of the.
I was worrying that we hadn't done it or finished off anything.
That's all done, in fact, a lot of those, if you recall, a lot of the policy changes in like our housing chapter of the comp plan have been identified as prioritizations for the, the development code, so we've, we've identified those there and then we've tried to I think, you know, Pat and I at the initial, we were pretty good about reviewing those comp plan changes with the planning commission as we started talking about changes to make sure, here's what the comp plan says we want to do, how do we make our development code more aligned with that, and so the residential for sure, urbanization covers your, um, some of that as well. The economic chapter got updated also, and so those got incorporated into your commercial industrial land stuff. And then we did quite a bit on the public outrage, or the public outreach, sometimes public outreach, the public outreach, which is sometimes outrage, the public outreach. That language we already put into our development code, or into, yeah, into the development code, we made those changes already, so it was comp plan first, right, to development code. And we just updated those before we started into residential, I believe, so.
Right, yeah, that, as you described it, I recall.
It's been a while, so I, I get it, I, I'm, I'm frustrated at the timing as well, but on the staffing day-to-day stuff, I'll just say I'm in the process of trying to get that arranged. I won't spill a lot of details right now, cause there's still some options, and I don't know which direction we're gonna go yet, it'll depend on cost and need and availability and there's a lot of things out there, so like I said, I just got resignation last week, I've been making phone calls and talking to other folks and reaching back out to Monroe, reaching back out to Dairy Village, talking with the county, talking to the COG, talking to some independent contractors, talking to Chelsea about hiring somebody new full-time and contracting them out again, so there's a lot of options there. And I don't know which one's gonna pan out yet, but I'm working on it and until that time, planning questions are coming to me. Leilani is doing a great job of checking voicemails and the, there's this general planning email account that she's checking on, Keep Me Pressed, but I'm essentially running the day-to-day operations of the planning department until I get somebody else in there, so. Be nice.
So Pete, Michael is gone?
His last day is technically Friday, we haven't seen him at work since last Monday, so I don't know that he'll be in the rest of the week, but he may be. Technically, his last day is Friday this one.
It's a bummer, he was a good one.
I feel like.
Yeah, we're sorry to lose him, definitely are, we, I.
He was, he was, of the three that we're talking about, he was the most knowledgeable in my opinion, and I experienced.
Is there something we need to do to prepare for next week's meeting? Anything we need to read or?
Oh, for what?
No, it's a training, Ashley, I thought it'd be good to, I mean, I love bringing the city council planning commission together, we, I wish we could do it more often, we can, but we respect that you are all volunteers and don't live to have meetings like we do, so. Combined with the city council, I think gives some time to talk through stuff. Ashley is really adamant about some of these, I'll say the fallout from the most recent legislative session, especially with the new laws and requirements on the housing side of things, so she's got a presentation, she's already submitted and largely polished and looks great, so it'll be very informative, but it's, it's mostly followed from there, she's gonna cover some basic stuff as well on complicated interests and that kinda stuff, just as a reminder stuff.
Classic land use procedural issues that you all will face when you're doing a land use hearing, hearing like we just did. If you, if anyone wants that presentation in advance, we can make a PDF version that Chris can hand out.
I'd love to have it in advance.
In advance?
In advance? I look surprised. Yeah, yeah, I don't.
I don't watch movie previews, I'm like, no, 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 when the movie comes out.
You don't read the last page of the, of the history.
I can get it to advance if that's a.
Watch reruns though?
Reruns? Only the really, really good ones.
Alright, I think, I think we're done, any other business? Oh, planning commission meeting? Did you have some?
No, I was just gonna say thank you to Chris for pulling this weight for the, the city and for keeping us informed and and just wanna recognize it and.
Yeah, only two jobs, right?
Well, now that product's over, it filled more like one and a half jobs and. So, no, it's, it's good, I, I love doing it and again, I just appreciate your patience with me, I know I'm a little slow on emails right now, I've got a little bit backed up there and voicemails I'm trying to get back, but mostly I'm just trying to get back to everybody right now, but I, I will say of the nine, just to reiterate, of the nine active files there, everyone's up to speed, we know where they're at, they've been communicated with. You know, the ones that are, I'm missing a little bit, it's like, okay, somebody called last Friday, maybe left a voicemail. We thought Michael was gonna get back to him yesterday and then he didn't show up, and now it's been another two days, and so there's a few of those still out there I need to follow up on, and I'm like, yeah, it's Monday, so tomorrow Wednesday, I'll reach out to those folks.
I guess I was curious, are we gonna see you each meeting now on, or is that just a?
That's up to Chris.
For the public hearings, I think it's helpful, as we're going through code stuff, maybe, it'll just kinda depend on where we're at, so I'll communicate with our chair and and talk with him and see when he feels like it's appropriate, it would be helpful to have her here, we can also do virtual, which saves a little bit of time and then she doesn't have to drive all the way back up to Portland area for the meetings and stuff, so we may do some virtual drop-ins and some other things to be helpful, but I would anticipate her here in person every meeting going forward, it's just, that's a lot. I appreciate her coming down tonight though and helping with the public hearings.
Well, I was thinking maybe she moved down here and still worked.
We're still working on that.
Kate, you like it down here, you like the drive down the bow.
It's good, me too.
Yeah.
She can't say how much she really likes it, it's been recorded, she does have other clients. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
It's seven o'clock, your turn.
Seven o'clock, the city councils meet at six and then we're on at seven, and I think we'll load probably eight, eight thirty. And if you, if you've been in the city council. And if you, if you've been in the city councils here, just feel free to just grab a seat down here if you can hear a little bit of me. We'll wrap up a little bit before seven with the city council.
Yeah, no. Good job.
I wasn't going to put them in there, but I'm like, but if they're not there and run to the record, then somebody could be like, hey, you never even mentioned my tax. So I'm like.
And I got them pretty well.
Yeah, I didn't put all the owners' names in there. At least they said I refer to the staff report for the owner names, but I didn't want to get a tax lots.
Yeah, you, you did okay with the numbers.
Thank you, Chris.